All right, we're gonna get gone, folks. I'm gonna call our June 18th, 2024 Sherwood City Council Regular Meeting into session. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Sylvia, roll call.
Mayor Rosner.
Here.
Council President Young.
Here.
Counsel Brous.
Here.
Counsel Mays.
Here.
Counsel Scott.
Here.
Counsel Giles.
Here.
Counsel Stankey.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. Next item is Approval of the Agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, counsel, motion passes. Next on our list tonight is, we have quite a few items on the consent agenda tonight. So I'm gonna... I'm sorry. Do you have something?
Read them clearly, please.
Anyways, I'm gonna run through these real quick. We have Item A, Approval of the June 4th, 2024 City Council Meeting Minutes. Item B, Resolution 2024-038, Reappointing Michelle Nedwick to the Sherwood Cultural Arts Commission. Item C, Resolution... Item C, Resolution 2024-039, Approving the City Investment Policy and Authorizing Investments. Item D, Resolution 2024-040, Certifying the Provision of Certain Municipal Services in Order to Qualify the City to Receive State Revenues. Item E, Resolution 2024-041, Authorizing the City Manager Pro Tem to Execute a Construction Contract for the Downtown Streetscapes Phase One Furnishing Repainting Project. Item F, Resolution 2024-042, Adopting the City Sherwood Employee Handbook 2024. Item G, Resolution 2024-043, Authorizing the City Manager Pro Tem to Sign an MOU with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI, Local 1777 Regarding Worker Compensation. And Item H, Resolution 2024-044, Authorizing the City Manager Pro Tem to Sign an MOU with Sherwood Police Officers Association, SPOA, Regarding Workers' Compensation.
I move consent.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. All right. We are on to Citizens Comments. Sylvia, do we have any tonight?
Mayor, we have on the sheet for two individuals.
Okay. Great. Jim Claus. Jim? You're up. Welcome to meeting, Jim.
Is this on?
It's on, Jim.
All right. Robert James Claus, 22211 Southwest Pacific Highway. Okay, now, what I'm doing tonight is I'm starting the formal procedure of exhausting administrative remedies and reaching finality. Now, when you sue a city after the most recent case in Pennsylvania, that's a question, but generally, you have to do it. Now, when I started in writing correspondence, I got a very favorable response from some state agencies. And finally, yesterday, day before yesterday, I think, maybe yesterday, I spent about an hour in Secretary of State's office. They think much what I think, that a good deal that's going on here could be waste, fraud, and abuse of public money. Now, it doesn't do any good to tell you people anything, including your city attorney. I told that city attorney, it's finalized law and it's constitutional amendments, you cannot do what you're doing on Cedar Brook Way, and he ignored me. Till the bar went ting-a-ling, ting-a-ling, and he got pointed. When his license was on the line, he understood, you don't do that. And that's exactly what you're trying to do to us. More than that, Walmart originally came to us through Joe Broder, so they were told by Keith Bass, you go on the Langer, she'd go no place. And then, both he and Langer testified in the public hearings, and it was not Walmart. Now, statute of limitations run on that, but not wasted fraud and abuse of public money, that's a different matter. Because it takes it out of civil. And I like to get out of civil because people pay attention. What I don't understand is you can't sit down with anything and tell you people anything because Mays makes the decisions. Now, I hope he keeps grinning and saying, because he's gonna get his chance at deposition, interlocutor, and discovery, if it goes that far to do the same. And why don't we give straight answers there? He will give us straight answers. But I don't see why you provoke the most generous citizen, family, and as successful a family as we've been to this point. Our children will stand up in almost any circumstances against your investigations. And I really don't understand why it's gone this far, but I do understand this, it's over with. Nobody is gonna come on my property and tell me, you're gonna run a road on that road that you've been told by ODOT violates the state constitution, and you continue to do it. Will you sit down and talk about it? No. Will you chase off prospective buyers? Yes. And we've got some witnesses against you that I would not want on the other side from me. One of them in particular is one of the most eligible lenders in the whole metro area. And he says you can't work with you. So, I'm still gonna try to have an open hand, but as one of my good friends, Chip Hudson, told me, he's an attorney, he's retired now, exhaust administrative remedies, and then he said, Jim, go waste, fraud, abuse of public funds, and you will get their attention. I hope it doesn't go that far, but that's Mr. Rosner's choice. And you wanna get citizens' way, I understand that, because the last thing you want is a question and answer period. Thank you.
Jim, thank you for your comments. Susan Claus. Hi, Susan.
Hi, how are you guys? All right, so I have a couple points of process. One is under new business, and there's no citizen comments allowed under new business, but I have specific comments on your resolution adopting the Capital Improvement Plan. And so, I wanted to make a couple comments on that, and maybe if you could extend it over, because there was not information provided other than a very, well, not even a full sentence on some of these capital improvements. If you look on page B2 of, I think, what you got in your packet, you have a capital improvement project that says Cedar Brook Way Improvements from Meinikee to Elworth. And you can have council goals of economic development, infrastructure, livability, public safety, fiscal responsibility, and citizen engagement. And this says that this project, 8.8 million, may be available for outside funding. It doesn't talk about what kind of outside funding you're talking about, if you're talking about the URA, because one of the things that we had been told before is that the URA was going to take that project on. The other thing that it's now showing is that it's for five years and beyond. When it was told, when you guys were trying to get the URA funding, that this project would be done immediately, and then it switched over to 20 years from now. And as somebody being impacted by this, not knowing what this is, it doesn't even show in your capital improvement project listing that you normally have, you normally have a plan, that was never submitted for the public to see. So I don't even know what the Cedar Brook Way Improvements from Meinikee to Elworth for 8.8 million, we don't even know what that entails. And so, we can't even comment on it. So my plea to you is, can we get more detail on that so comments can be made before council action is taken on that? And maybe we can also have a discussion about what kind of outside funding you guys are projecting on that? If you are, whatever that is, maybe it's not the URA, maybe it's something else, maybe you know of something else. But, and the 8.8 million, before, when I used to be on the Budget Committee, there used to be like a full capital plan, and each, there was a page for each plan. I'm assuming you have that somewhere, but it didn't end up into the information for the citizens to review for anything for tonight, and I know that you're going over, you have a little bit of new business where you have a resolution that entails adopting this, but we don't have the detail, not just for this one. It's for all of the projects on here, you don't have a lot of detail, it's just a summary list. So, if we could get the full detail on what the city is projecting and what those costs are, when those costs were done, because I've, I've seen a different number for the 8.8 that's there now. I saw it at 9.2, I think, two years ago, I can't remember. So, my point is, are these numbers good? Are we just throwing numbers on a paper and saying, hey, this is the best we have, and we don't have any detail, but yet, we're projecting to the citizens like we know what we're gonna do in these projects. And then, that would also cover... Excuse me for a second. It's in the public hearing. So, public hearing, number C, adopting the budget, and... Oh, maybe it's not. Okay. Well, so you get my point, right?
Thank you, Susan.
Yeah, our capital improvement and projects, could you please address that before you make a decision? So we can comment on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Sylvia, do we have any other public comments tonight? All right. So we're gonna move on to Item 7, which is Presentations. We have a Patriot Award Presentations, and we have some folks here that could come up. Ryan, do you mind introducing them?
Sure. All right, good to see you. Good evening, counsel.
Get you some more chairs.
Yeah, I'll bring some chairs up in just a second, but my name's Ryan Adams, I'm the outgoing for a year city attorney, and I'll be deploying with the 41st Infantry Brigade Combat Team. This is Colonel Pete Helzer, he's the 41st Infantry Brigade Combat Team Brigade Commander. So he's my boss on the, on the Army side. And this is Scott and Monica, they're from the ESGR, which is the Employer Support of the Garden Reserve. The employees here, I believe we have five, that are in the Garden Reserve from the City of Sherwood, have nominated counsel. And in extension, Craig, our city manager, for the Patriot Award that is given by the DOD. And I'll let them talk a little bit about what that is, but we would like to make that presentation to counsel, and then Colonel Helzer will talk a little bit about what the brigade's gonna do over the course of the next year. So, I don't need to speak anymore, but I just wanted to say, from a personal perspective, thank you very much for all of the support that you've given. Not just me, but all of the employees that serve our country, so it's very much appreciated.
Thank you, Ryan. It's a no-brainer.
I guess I move in the hot seat?
Yeah.
All right. Again, my name's Scott Witt with the Employer Support of the Garden Reserve, and this is Monica Ocampo. And as Captain Adams said, we're here to present an award, specifically Patriotic Employer Award, which was given to Mr. Tim Rosner, as well as an overall award, a statement of support for your entire board or council for the support that you've given the military. And a little bit about the Employer Support of the Garden Reserve, and our role is that we are here to support the military members and their civilian employers. And we do that through community outreach events, training, things such as covering the USARA laws and the things regarding when people are deployed and coming back from service. And a lot of employers struggle and get a little confused, and they may pass over people for promotions, or do, you know, this or that, that just because they don't know. And the reason we're here is, you all have done an exceptional job, or you wouldn't have been nominated. And it's nice to be here for these events to give recognition where it's due and show your support of the Garden Reserve and the military members. So, we have the award for Mr. Tim Rosner, and I know you had said you want the whole group to be involved, so I don't know if you wanna chime in, feel free.
Is this gonna be a photo op too, because I'd like to go.
Yeah, yeah, we'd love to get a photo. All right.
All right, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Good.
Ready? Here we go. Oh, yeah, put on video. Hang on just a second. Maybe I did that. Sorry, stand by. Okay, ready? Here we go. One, two, three. All right.
Was your, was your phone?
Yeah, there you go.
All right, Mr. Mayor, counsel, as Ryan said, I'm Pete Helzer, commander of the 41st. I am responsible for training and employing over 2,000 soldiers in the state of Oregon and our National Guard, as well as an additional 1,300 in Washington and New Mexico. We do a combination of federal combat and operations other than war missions, as well as disaster response within the state of Oregon. Personally, in my 27 years, I have found working with our community here at home in Oregon to be the most rewarding part of that. But what we have coming up over the course of the next year and a half here, for the month of July, starting up in about two weeks here, we're going to Fort Johnson, Louisiana, formerly Fort Polk, to the Joint Readiness Training Center to do a large exercise simulating large-scale combat operations as we might expect to face if we go to war with a peer or near-peer enemy. Within days and weeks of that, several of our elements are turning around and deploying overseas. Literally, two days after leaving Fort Johnson, one of our battalions departs for Fort Sill, Oklahoma, to begin training for a short-range air defense mission in the Central Command Area, protecting coalition bases, State Department sites, and other assets across Iraq, Syria, and Jordan. Approximately two weeks later, the brigade headquarters in one of our infantry battalions deploys to Kosovo for the UN peace, or excuse me, the NATO peacekeeping mission, still going on there in the Balkans. Around Thanksgiving timeframe, we have another battalion going to the Central Command Area to the UN peacekeeping mission and the Sinai Peninsula between Egypt and Israel. So, they are going to be more in harm's way than a lot of our people, given the current global situation. And then, next spring, folks from Oregon, from the Springfield area, as well as Washington, New Mexico partners to the Horn of Africa, Somalia and Djibouti, to support anti-piracy and anti-terror efforts in the Red Sea and in that area. So we have a very busy couple of years ahead of us, and there is no way we could successfully do all of this without the support of employers such as yourselves. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and having been a active-duty servicemember myself and a reservist for many years, I understand the commitment it takes to take on these roles, to be away from your families, to be away from your jobs. The support it requires from your families in those process, in those deployments, so I can't say how much I appreciate what you guys do and do every day for us, so thank you so much. Does anyone else on counsel wanna say anything?
I will just also echo, as a spouse of a military who deployed often, and is 22 years in the Navy. The family at home also, like, you know that that's a job to them as well, supporting the home front while you guys are gone, so I just thank all military for what they do, protecting our country. There's a lot going on right now, so.
Indeed. Thank you.
I was gonna say, you definitely have a harder job, us supporting you and, and, and just, I mean frankly, I'm not even gonna save up... Oh, jeez, I forgot, my mic's broken. I'm not even gonna just save up my legal questions, I'll just ask Sebastian, but I'll, you know, it's one of those things where frankly, you know, we pray and hope that everyone is safe on these missions. Incredibly important work, and, you know, Ryan would look forward to a safe return and many more years. Thanks.
And I would just say thank you and be safe.
Well, I certainly appreciate you guys, you all coming here and recognizing us. It feels kinda silly to me, I don't feel like we did anything really deserving of recognition, I mean, I think you all are the ones doing the things that are deserving of recognition, we're just doing what's right and what was obvious and not even really worthy of much discussion. It was Ryan came to us and we said, yeah, absolutely. How do we, what do we have to do to support you? No question. And we appreciate Ryan and his service to the city, and his, as well as yours, and everyone else's service to our country, so thank you.
Yeah. Appreciate your service, be safe, come home. And, yeah, and I was surprised there is such an award, because, yeah, this is common sense, what we've done with the city for decades, and we'll continue to do so.
And get me an address for care packages, Ryan.
And Dan, who's a Navy veteran, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I just wanna say good luck, and we can't wait to have you back. It'll be a little bit different if you're gone. So, take care of yourself, and we'll see you soon.
Awesome. Well, thank you again, and as we discussed before the meeting, I agree with Counsel Scott, it's, it seems a little awkward, we should be honoring you, we should be honoring the veterans, and with that in mind, I just have a list of all of our citizen warriors and veterans that work for the city, and I just wanted to read those names off to everyone, because they do amazing job for our city, and they should be recognized for the work they do in the armed services. So, of course, we have Ryan Adams, Dan Bolton, Dave Campbell, Ryan Evans, Joe Gader... Sorry?
Gader?
Sorry?
Gaderi? Gaderi.
Joe Gaderi, sorry, Joe. Grant Irish, Dan Miller, Officer David Rondon, Detective Alex Salisbury, Officer Stan Smith, Andrew Sterling, Officer Brianna Woodward, and Officer James Wolfher. So, I just thought it was important that we call them out for all the great work they do as well. So, again, thank you so much for coming in today, and thank you for honoring us with this.
Thank you.
All right. So we're onto new business. We have one item tonight, Resolution 2024-045, Adopting the Capital Improvement Plan. Craig, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Evening, Mayor, counsel. In front of you, should counsel adopt capital improvement plan, is really what we're talking about here. I just want, many funds sources require the capital improvement plan to be adopted before funds can be spent. Having this plan is a precursor to expenditures of system development charges and revenue from sources outside the city. The CIP is only a plan. It is not a commitment or does not obligate funds. It's a vision of projects that combines input from city council, advisory committees, and staff into one document. Annual revisions are required to adjust the plan to changing priorities and circumstances. Counsel held a work session to discuss the five-year and the one-year CIP on April 16th, 2024. The financial impacts of this resolution have been considered within the city manager's proposed 2425 budget. The 2425 budget's been approved by the Budget Committee prior to tonight's meeting. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 24... 2024-045, Adopting the CIP Plan for Physical Year 2425.
Thank you, Craig. Questions from counsel?
I do have one. Question clarification a little bit. You know, the CIP, when it comes to us, as you said, there's kind of the one-year plan, and then there's kind of a year-two, year-three, year-four, year-five plus. Correct me if I'm wrong, and I've always thought about that as, obviously, if we're looking at the current year plan, that's more of like, yeah, this stuff is happening, it's in our budget, we're going to do it, we have pretty good detail on it, as we get into year-two, year-three, year-four. I largely think of them as placeholders, right? So these are things for, we're trying to budget money five years out, and kind of with rough numbers, and like, if the plan holds as-is, here's how much we're gonna spend in all these various buckets, but as you said, we're not committed to anything necessarily in year-two and year-three, year-four, they're just placeholder projects with some level of detail, maybe some have less level of detail. Am I, is that an accurate summation of what you're saying here?
Yes, that's what we're saying. A lot of times, funding projects go on this list because counsel wants to actually go try to find funds, so it's actually on the CIP list. As far as updating, we update as we get closer to doing the projects, but these projects in the transportation will be updated next year when we start working on the transportation plan. So you actually gotta evaluate if you're gonna spend the money for one year to update stuff that's not on the one- or two-year time window there, three-year time window. And they will be updated when the transportation plan gets underway this fall with that project.
Counsel, yeah. Counsel President?
Two things. The CIP plan can change, sometimes with council goals, I would think, so that's why sometimes there's changes made. But I, in fairness to the citizen that made a citizen comment earlier, the five-year, the CIP document used to be like 250 pages long, and used to have a one-page document for each project. Where I'm, that's what I'm not seeing anymore either, which is what Susan Claus was mentioning, is there a reason we're not doing that anymore?
No, it can actually come through this process, if that's what we wanted to, the last few years, it's just been brought forward with the five-year and the one-year with identified those projects, but there is a CIP plan that goes 20 years out, I believe, is what it is. And that's what Susan was probably mentioning.
And maybe it can be two separate things, but just so that our citizens have, and I'm looking around the website, and there's access to the previous plans, 23 through 28, 22 through 27, I think it was, one of those had all that information. So, does any of that information change, or does it get updated along the way?
It gets updated with the five-year and the one-year CIP plan is what goes on.
So...
It can come as part of this packet if you guys would like.
I know, I in the past have found that helpful, when I wanted more information about a project, when I just see a title, sometimes I'm like, oh, I wonder what that's about, and I would go look at that page. I don't know if anybody else.
Links, links would be great.
Yep.
Yeah, it doesn't need, I don't need a 250-page printed document, but if the citizens had access, that it was clear that this one, this goes with this year's, or however that works, yeah.
Yeah, it gets updated with, after we all meet, Joe in Engineering updates that plan.
Okay.
With what projects move around, she moves that around.
Yep, just make it accessible.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Any other questions?
I move, we approve Resolution 2000... Resolution 2024-045, Adopting the Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, Physical Year 2024-25.
Second.
All right, motion and second, discussion on motion?
Just not, sort of on the motion. I just call out that, as Craig alluded, we will be doing a TSP update soon, and there'll be opportunity for citizens and everyone to weigh in on some of these projects in the future.
Can you tell them what a TSP?
Transportation System. Transportation System Plan.
Like any government capital project, when it gets close to being an actual project, i.e. a couple of years out, there is always a whole lot of public process.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2024-045, adopting the capital improvement plan, CIP for fiscal year 2024-25, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, council. All right, we're on to public hearings. We have three public hearings tonight. Sylvia, do you want to read us in?
The Sherwood City Council will hold three public hearings this evening to receive testimony on Resolution 2024-046, declaring the city's election to receive state shared revenues. Resolution 2024-047, adopting a schedule of fees as authorized by the city's zoning and community development code, establishing fees for miscellaneous city services and establishing an effective date. And Resolution 2024-048, adopting the fiscal year 2024-25 budget of the city of Sherwood, making appropriations, imposing and categorizing, category, excuse me, categorizing taxes and authorizing the city manager to take such action necessary to carry out the adopted budget. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff will present a staff report, questions, if any, by the city council for staff. We will then consider written testimony. We will then open the public hearing for testimony and the time will be limited to four minutes per person. Any interested person may present testimony. We will then close the public hearing and no other comments will be heard from the public. Final comments by staff, questions of staff, if any, by the council, followed by council discussion. If you wish to speak, please fill out one of the request for speak forms and submit it to the city recorder prior to the time the public hearing is open for testimony. The mayor will recognize people who wish to speak and any comments must be addressed through the mayor. When you come forward, please state your name and place of residence for the record as this hearing will be recorded.
All right. Thank you, Sylvia. So, we'll go ahead and get started. Turn it over to David for the first resolution.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor, Council President, and the rest of the council. The first resolution I'm gonna talk about is declaring the city of Sherwood's election to receive state shared revenue. Oregon revised statute provides for Oregon municipalities to receive state shared revenue should they elect to, through resolution or ordinance. And I'm going to get a presentation up for the folks at home real quick. I saw that just switch screens. Perfect. Also, state statute requires the municipality to hold two public hearings on the use of these funds. We did hold the public hearing on May 23, 2024 through the Budget Committee, and this is our second meeting. Just to talk a little bit about state shared revenue, council, you've seen this presentation, it's pretty much the same one I presented at the Budget Committee. This is more for the folks at home. These estimates, they're provided by the legal Oregon cities. They prepare a great report in the month of February. Just to kind of give you some estimates on how you should budget these state shared revenues. The certified population as of December 15, 2023 was almost 21,000, is 20,868 residents. And this is just, this graph just shows, folks, the kind of the, really the... Yeah. Well, it should show, that is kind of odd. My presentation was in PowerPoint, but then when it got created to Adobe, for some reason, it went away. So, I'm just gonna kind of talk about it.
Well, we can go by the colors over there on the chart.
Exactly. So, property taxes, it's kind of the lighter green makes up about 45% of the revenue in the general fund. Intergovernmental, which is the darker green, is about 8%, and that's where the state shared revenue is recorded, it's kind of mixed in there. Franchise fees, about 15%, that's kind of the, that's, it's right to the left of the intergovernmental. Charges for services, kind of that light blue, and then the regular blue is fines, interest, and other make up the rest of it at 13%. So, total general fund revenue, a little bit over $18.8 million. So, state shared revenue in the general fund, we're projecting or we budgeted a little over $800, $805,000. The little thin slice represents cigarette tax, a little over $14,600. The marijuana tax, the money we receive from the state and through our local tax is a little over $90,000, which is 11% of the state shared revenue. Liquor tax is the kind of the larger amount of money that we receive through the state of Oregon at 50%, and then other state shared revenue, about $295,000 is the darker green. Other state shared revenue, this is in the street operations fund, total about $1.7 million, what we have budgeted. The large chunk of this is vehicle taxes that we receive through the state. And that little smaller slice is the gas tax. There are some restrictions when you're looking at the street operations funds. General fund, a little bit more flexible. They're combined with non-restricted funds. There are some, a portion of that local tax, the marijuana tax, that is actually restricted for law enforcement because that's what the, when the voters approved it, we said we committed to the police department. The other funds, they could support public safety administration, community services, facilities, community development, just kind of all the general operations in the general fund. Street operations, as I said, is a little bit more restrictive. We have to work it on paving projects, street maintenance, slurry seal, crack seal, and so forth. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions that the city council might have for me.
All right. Thank you, David. Any questions for David? Doesn't look like we have any questions. So, do we have any written, did we receive any written testimony?
No, we did not. I didn't receive any emails either. Public comment.
So, I'll open it up for public comment. Do we have anyone, Sylvia?
Not for this one, no.
I'm assuming we have no one online? Okay. So, we will close public comment and we'll move right into, go back to staff, any Q and A we want to talk about?
Yes, for the general public, we also got a presentation of this during Budget Committee, so this is why, why I have questions tonight.
It's pretty easy in my mind. We need to do this so we can get our revenue from the state.
Yes.
It just boils down to that.
Free money.
All right. I guess we can take a motion at this point.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-046, declaring the city's election to receive state shared revenues. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion on motion? Again? Nope. All right. All right. Yeah. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2024-046, declaring the city's election to receive state shared revenues? In favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, council. We'll go ahead and move on to our next resolution, Resolution 2024-047. And David, you're up again.
Yes, so this resolution is adopting a fee schedule, schedule of fees as authorized by city zoning, community development code, establishing fees for miscellaneous city services, and establishing effective date. So, the process that's involved in this is during the budget process, city staff departments annually review all the fees and update them as they feel is necessary. There's some restrictions on those fees, which is kind of outlined in the resolution, a 2% increase as previously approved in Resolution 2017-008. And that's the maximum amount that we can charge, even though CPI was 3.76. 6.43% increase approved through Resolution 2018-049 for SDC and TDT fees. And there's some other miscellaneous fees. I'm just gonna touch on a few of them. And I, and if you have any questions, there are city staff here, so they can talk about their departments, really finance, what is kind of coming along in this and the document for city council to approve. Just some of them, Parks and Recreation, Section 5, filled house, increase in team fees, increasing rental fees. At the senior center, there's an increase in suggested donation for meals for ages under 62. A few of the other ones that are outlined, commercial rates for utility charges, those are increased. And consumption rates, fire protection services, we increase the fees there for total valuation amounts. Broadband, addition of fees related to residential services, damage or repair to broadband utility and removal of cross-connect fees. These are just a few, but I do need to point out, I was alerted today of a couple errors in there, so I need to alert city council of this. On page 233 and 234 of your document, there's some Scribner errors. I was alerted by engineering today that a couple of the columns, a couple of the titles on the columns were wrong. And this is really under sewer SDCs and kind of the Tonquin employment area there, where one of the columns is, it says reimbursement, it actually should say reimbursement charge. Then the next column says flow count, but that's not correct. It should say improvement charge. And then the last column, there is no title. It should say flow count. So, I'm gonna, if, as long as council's okay, I'm going to adjust just the wording for those, for those columns in those three sections. And then one, the last one is on page 180. It looks like a few of the fees did not get updated. And this is in regards to single, is it single day rentals? Is that correct? Single production rentals. There's actually, should have been a 5% increase. Right now, it reads 450 for a partial day. It actually should be 473. Full day, currently it reads 600, 5% increase. It should say $630. And extended day, right now, it says 800. Should, with a 5% increase, it should read 840. Those are the few little minor changes that I would like to propose to city council that I can make before we post this for the general public on July 1st.
Are you also updating the non-resident ones right in the column next to it? Yes. Adding 5% to those three categories as well. So, what was 540, 720, and 916? Need to add 5% to that column.
Yeah, we'll get those updated so that they can be posted correctly July 1st. And with that, I'm open up for some questions that city council might have.
Questions? So, are you suggesting that we potentially vote to approve this tonight with those adjustments? Or do you want to hold it over?
No, I'd suggest that we approve it tonight with those adjustments. So, these fee schedules are, it could go live, are basically in effect July 1st instead of the second meeting in July.
Okay. And is everyone clear on the changes? All right. All right. So, do we have any written testimony? Nope. And do we have any public comment? All right. Neil Shannon, come on out. Welcome, Neil.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, council.
So, you heard the read into this, you got four minutes, so.
I did.
Happy to have you here.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Neil Shannon and I reside at 23997 Southwest Redfern Drive in Sherwood. I'd like this council to reconsider the fees in Section 9, planning. Item B, appeals of a type 3 and type 4 action, page 199 of your packet. A type 3 hearing is usually held before an administrative judge and is appealed to the Planning Commission. And a type 4 hearing is held before the Planning Commission and appealed to city council. Currently, the schedule imposes a fee of 50% of the original application fee to individuals filing an appeal without regard to their status in the matter, whether they be the applicant or the opponent. Two years ago, I was involved in a type 3 hearing regarding a sub-development in the Brookman Road area. While I found the hearing process well-run, informative, and fair, I did feel that there were some issues brought forward that were important enough to bring to Planning Commission for review and reconsideration. Unfortunately, I was not able to appeal that decision because the cost of the appeal was significant and burdensome. The applicant for a type 3 or type 4 request is usually a developer with deep pockets who can spread the cost of the planning process over an extended period. In most cases, an opponent to a proposed development is local citizenship or HOA. 50% charge of the application fee in the case cited above would have been $4,107.33, which was found to be onerous to an individual, even with the backing of the Local Homeowners Association. I'd like to see an adjustment to the fee schedule that would make it easier for local neighbors to appeal a decision for a sub-development. Since in most cases, the developer is the applicant for the development, I suggest that the fee for an appeal by the applicant remain the same at 50%, but allow the, a significant reduction to the fee schedule for an appeal by an opponent to the sub-development. Please consider using the same fee, $250, as applied for a type 1 and type 2 appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. All right. Anything, any other, no one online? All right, thank you. All right, then we go ahead and close the public hearing at this point. And do we have additional questions for staff?
I have a little. I have one. So, with that being said, what are our actual, I assume we have the higher fees so that we can, so that we're not inundated with things, but what are our actual costs for those kind of hearings? Do we know?
I'm gonna turn it over to the Community Development Director.
Thank you. Good question, Counselor Giles. So, an appeal of a type 3 or type 4, whether it's going to Planning Commission or city council, if we do get an appeal, usually we're gonna have an attorney look at it. We have a land use attorney on contract, so right away, those, the costs are gonna go up. If it's a complex project right out of the gate, we may do that anyways. But, for the most part, especially at a type 3, we generally don't send that to legal counsel. So, right away on an appeal, we would. So, there's some extra costs there. And then you're just looking at the extra cost for staff time to prepare for the hearing, prepare a staff report on appeal, et cetera.
Yeah. So, is there any way at this point to figure out what the additional workload or anything, if we were to say, you know, hey, it's $500, right, or something like that to cover the attorney's, again, I don't, I'm not trying to lose money here. I'm just, I'm sensitive to, you know, I don't have four grand laying around to appeal something like that, so.
It's really gonna depend on the case and the complexity of the case. And I think the biggest fee, again, is going to probably be legal. I think, you know, we're always gonna be subject to the 120-day deadline. So, we're gonna, staff time, we're just gonna have to get it done. Question is, you know, what type of attorney and how much. In the few appeals, maybe we can, I mean, I don't know, decision-making tonight, what I can do is look at the appeals that we've had in the last five years or so. We had a few that came to city council, you probably recall those. And then a few that went on to Luba as well. So, we can try and gauge how much was spent between the original decision and city council, which this comment, public comment is based off of, versus where it gets really expensive is if it's going to Luba. And so, we can try and parse that out. I'm happy to do that, try and figure out what we spent on an appeal. Staff time, probably gonna be a little bit harder to go back on, but we can try and get it.
And in reality, what I'm looking for is a best guess on this because there might be, there might be a, you know, let's say we had 10 appeals. Boy, it must be my voice is making it feedback. But there's, you know, there's no way to know if some of those appeals did not happen because the person didn't have the money to come forward, right? And so, what I don't want to do is, is open up the floodgate. So, if we were to, you know, look at this and get the numbers together, whatever, it feels like it's something that is not just, like, I'm looking for a best guess kind of a thing because I don't know that I can totally get what the additional workload is gonna be to your team if we were to lower it.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. And I think it's also gonna depend on the application type as well. I mean, I think in this specific example, and happy to get the information, but off the top, for this specific example, the fee, the appeal fee reference was approximately 4,000.
Yeah.
You know, a few hours of an attorney's time is gonna add up to that pretty quickly. And I can check on that. But, we have, where it gets a little more difficult is if we have, you know, the law, really large industrial projects that are going on, those fees could be $10,000 on an appeal. dollars on an appeal, right? Those fees are, it could be anywhere between six and ten thousand dollars on an appeal. So it really depends on the application type. But if you guys are interested in this, happy to do some research on it.
Yeah, frankly, I'm just trying to figure out how to make it a little bit, a little bit more easy and fair. I get that, you know? It's the same thing with, with business licenses, right? You know, certain, large companies can write a check for, you know, a hundred grand and not be a problem, and others, you know, for a mom and pop, that makes it so they can't open a store, right? So I'm just trying to figure out how to make it fair.
Yeah. And I do just want to say, you know, from a, from a planning, economic development, housing production standpoint, I think I share the concern that if you make the barrier too low, you know, respectfully, and I think this case, there was very legitimate.
Yeah.
You know, neighborhood concern. Appeals can slow down the process significantly, and it's a tool that is used to slow down development as well. And so we get, we need to be mindful of that in addition to being mindful of the, of the appeal cost.
Can it be a, can it be a pairing of, you know, hey, it's this amount of money or a hundred signatures? Or, you know what I mean? Like, can we, can we figure out some other way to, and again, we can work on this another time, but I feel like there.
I think, I think it's worth taking a look at it in the future. I mean, we, I don't think we're going to solve, solve it here. I understand where you're getting at.
Yeah.
I understand Neil's concern. You know, my recollection on some of the appeals we've had, they've been extremely costly for us. So it just depends on the project. I do, I want to give some time for some other folks, Keith.
I would encourage council not to alter the proposed fee schedule. It is not a good idea to do what is suggested. It is important to understand that if you do, yes, you open up the floodgates, there are at least a few members of the community that will appeal everything to bog down development. If, and I have experienced this, that if there is an opinion in the community on an action that is a, that is a type three, is suggested, that something might have been overlooked, and folks involved can approach the city manager or an elected within the appeal window and bring up the issue and see if an elected or city manager believes that there might be some value in self-appealing it. I've been involved in doing that. And so that is the approach that I suggest. And I believe that that occurred in the, what the issue that was cited, and there wasn't an elected that had been approached to do that. I might be wrong on this specific one, but I've been involved in ones where we've, at the urging of an elected, got support of council, not necessarily to rule on it, but to send it to self-appeal and have the planning commission take a second look. So that, without altering the fee schedule, is always a tool that is available and would not open up Pandora's box.
Yeah. Two comments I'd like to make here. So I'm certainly sympathetic to the issue raised, you know, because I think we all are. You know, four thousand dollars is a big check to write for myself, for most people. But two things I'd say is, I echo the concerns around, A, what is the actual cost of us to process that appeal? Also, the, the, I'm certain, if the, if the fee was really low, you just, there's, as you said, there's people that would, you know, that would, we'd get way too many appeals. So where's the, where's the balance in that? I don't know the answer to that. I'd certainly be supportive of, you know, let's pass this fee schedule for this year. We've had this fee schedule for a long time, you know? And then if we want to do over between now and the next time around, do some work on, is there, is there a better way to do this? Is it a different percentage? Is it a percentage or a minimum of this amount? Like, maybe, maybe we can do some work with data to figure out if there's a, if there's a lower number that still creates a high enough bar. But I'd also echo, I'd also add that there, the, even in those hearings, in the type three and type four hearings, there was citizen input allowed throughout the hearings process. It wasn't like nobody had a chance to speak or give their input. There's public comment in all those processes, the opportunity to testify. So it's not like the voice wasn't heard. It was, the voice was heard, decision was made, and now there's an appeal process. I would also imagine that having one fee for the applicant and a different fee for opposition might not pass legal muster, but I'll let the lawyers weigh in on that one. So I'm supportive of reexamining it, but I'm also supportive of continuing to approve this as is for now.
Thank you. Dan, did you have anything?
I've heard this a few times, being the liaison to the planning commission about this fee for the appeals for the type three and type four, with them being fifty percent of the original application fee, in that it does create a barrier for individuals like Neil to not be able to really appeal when, you know, in a situation possibly he would want to. And so I agree with what has been said, that although we probably won't be able to solve this tonight, it does deserve a look and see if there is something that we can come up with to figure out, you know, something better for our process, or maybe what other cities are doing, take a look at that, so that citizens can feel like they can appeal these decisions and not have to, like, take out a loan or anything like that in order to do that.
Is it possible to take that section out, to vote on the fee schedule and leave that section out to have more conversation?
I, if you took it out, wouldn't the fee schedule be zero then?
I don't have it in front of me, that's so.
But I mean, you have to have some fee.
Correct.
I would say a fee schedule can be changed.
At any time.
At any time throughout the year. So if we approve it tonight, have staff bring us back some more information, we can always adjust the fee schedule.
Happy to do that quickly for you guys.
One other thing.
Sure.
One other thing I just, four thousand dollars is a big check to write, but I'd also say, I can go to nine neighbors and get four hundred dollars each, I'd write a four hundred dollar check to appeal something I felt passionate about. So if there's a decent amount of, of agreement, you should be able to crowdfund that fairly reasonably.
And there was an application cited that was an HOA that was very, fairly large HOA in this.
That's a whole nother thing. I'm just saying individually, if, if, if the seven of us up here were individual citizens and we felt very strongly about opposing something, six hundred bucks each? Okay, I'll write that check.
All right. Any other?
I guess my final comment on that would be that if, I'd be okay supporting the fee schedule if we, if we could have a further work session on looking at that with a potential amendment. Just, again, I'm not looking to open the floodgates, but it feels like there should be a middle, a middle ground or something, because the thing I have heard, as much as everybody on this stand here says, we want feedback, we want to hear, sometimes people feel like they're not able to be heard, and I'm, I'm just sensitive to that. And so I want to make sure that we're really looking at that for, for everything, not just this particular one. So don't feel picked on. But, but if we can, if we can commit to, to having a look at that and potentially adjusting it here in the near future, then I'd be okay supporting it.
I, yeah, I, my take on this is, we need, we need to get it approved because July first is quickly approaching.
Yeah.
If, if we want to take a data-driven look at it, in actual data, my guess is we're going to find these appeals are very expensive overall. But I'm, I mean, more than happy to do that as well, but I think we need to get it passed tonight.
We can also look at what our surrounding cities.
Yeah.
Yep. I'll get you a memo or a work session. Yep, sounds good.
All right. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I was going to say, or, I mean, it could be literally as easy as, you know, passing along all of our emails or something at the, you know, if they don't know how to get ahold of an elected to, to make, you know, to pull a special card out or something, you know what I mean? There might be something like that, which is, hey, if, if you can't get together the funds, you're, you're elected and write them an email. Again, we can be creative on this so that we can make sure that it's being addressed properly, I guess.
Well, I would just add, we need to make sure there's a real, that, that we, it's got to be data-driven.
Oh, a hundred percent, yeah.
Because I, we've had some appeals that have just.
Oh, yeah.
We have, we have lost money.
Yeah.
And we need to go through those processes, and we need to be sensitive to our community as well, but we have limited staff to get these things done as well, so. All right.
So we are committed to do a work session on this?
I have zero interest.
I'm open for work session.
Yeah, we'll do a work session.
I'll make sure they could schedule. All right. Do you have a motion?
A quick question. Sebastian, should we, is it okay just to highlight the page numbers of Scribner errors and say that we agreed with the making corrections to the Scribner errors in the proposal?
That, that procedure is fine, yes.
And excuse me, mayor, we also need to close the public hearing.
Oh, oh, I thought I did, but, okay, we'll close the public hearing. Sorry, Sylvia. And that was on the last one. So we, so it looks like we've already had our conversations, we'll go right to the resolution.
So I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four zero four seven, adopting the fee schedule as authorized with the City Zoning and Community Development Code, establishing fees for mal, maliciously, miscellaneous city services and establishing an effective date and correcting Scribner errors as noted by staff.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second.
Wait, point of order. There was a set of Scribner errors, there was also a set of data errors, which I think.
Scribner and data errors, I amend my motion, yeah.
Monetary errors, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Any additional discussion on the motion? All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor of approving resolution twenty twenty-four zero four seven, adopting a schedule of fees as authorized by the City Zoning and Community Development Code, establishing fees for miscellaneous city services and establishing an effective date. Say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you, council. All right, we're on to resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero four eight. I'm going to turn it over to David again.
Thank you. So this resolution is adopting the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five budget. The city of Sherwood making appropriations, imposing and categorizing taxes, and authorizing the city manager, Craig Sheldon, to take such necessary action to carry out the adopted budget. Just quick background, I know, council, you're familiar with this, but on May sixteenth, the Sherwood Budget Committee received the budget message, reviewed the proposed budget, heard any public comment, if any, then on May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, the Budget Committee approved the proposed budget. Notice that the approved budget has been, has been published in accordance with Oregon local budget law. And really, the final steps of the budget process is for city council to hold one public, this last public hearing per ORS two ninety-four four five three, and then adopt fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five budget. So with that, I'll open up any questions? Not really, there was no changes or anything from when the budget was approved by the Budget Committee.
All right, thank you, David. Questions for David? All right, looks like we have no questions. Do we have any testimony? No written testimony, no, no one online? All right, so the here, the testimony was open and now it's closed. Any additional questions for staff? Yes, Keith?
It's not a question, it's just a statement. David, Craig, the entire leadership team, great, great budget process this year, really appreciate the collaborative approach, mindful of our, you know, goals, you know, in long term with our reserves. Loved it, loved it, loved it, appreciate it. And, yeah, a full supportive, the recommendation from the Budget Committee.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I'll echo.
Yeah, yeah, I'll echo too. Budget process was very smooth this year. Craig, you and the team did a great job of putting all the documentation together, the meetings. Kudos to our Budget Committee. I just want to throw that out for those who are listening. Our Budget Committee is made up by council and community members in about equal proportions. Katie, our chair, did an amazing job running those meetings. And for all of you who would like a lot of detail on this, you can go watch those budget meetings, they're all on the website, and they're all recorded, so you can hear them. But the staff did a great job presenting, and the Budget Committee was very thoughtful and pragmatic about looking at our budget. So I can't, can't say enough about it. You guys did a great job. All right, so.
I'll make a motion.
Go for it.
To approve resolution two zero two four dash zero four eight, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-four twenty-five budget at the city of Sherwood, making appropriations, imposing and categorizing taxes, and authorizing the city manager to take such action necessary to carry out the adopted budget.
Second. All right, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? I'm sure Dan has none. Okay, all those in favor of adopting resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero four eight, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five budget for the city of Sherwood, making appropriation, imposing and categorizing taxes, and authorizing the city manager to take such action necessary to carry out the adopted budget, say aye.
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 Opposed? Budget passes. Thank you, council. All right. Thank you, David, for walking us through all that. Thank you, Sylvia, for keeping me on track. Appreciate that. And we'll move right into city manager report.
I just have a couple of them tonight. We held a joint press conference today with EPA, Region Ten representatives this morning, sharing information on the pending five million dollar grant from the EPA to clean up the Tan Resite. I'd just like to thank council president Young for attending and providing Sherwood's information in the mayor's absence and other, another conflict. And also, city offices will be closed tomorrow in observance of Juneteenth. And I'd just like to thank city staff that worked Cruz Inn, which was the broadband team, PD and Public Works. And then if I could have Eric come up and introduce our new planning manager, that would be great.
Thank you, Craig, Mayor Rosener, city council. Really, really happy to introduce our new planning manager, Sean Conrad. Sean kind of stood out in the interview process. It was just really clear that he had a really deep experience in the planning sector, and I'll let him speak to his experience, but, you know, for a small city, we do a lot of planning work, current planning, long-range planning, all sorts of stuff, focusing on the daily customers, but also the, the big picture. And it was just clear that he had that depth to him that I think we were really looking for. He's hit the ground running the last ten days. He's been in six different Sherwood West meetings, including three presentations, two planning commission interviews, one pre-application conference, and, and a whole lot more. Now he's going to be looking at fee schedules, it sounds like, so turn that over to Sean.
Trial by fire.
Well, thank you, Eric. Yeah, good evening, mayor, council members. So just a brief background, I guess, where I've been. I've been doing land use planning for twenty-three years, cities and counties, in both California, Montana, Washington, and now here, most recently with the city of Seattle, the largest city I've worked with, but I've worked with a number of municipalities, many the size of Sherwood. And actually, that's where I enjoyed planning the most, and I'm really happy to be here. Eric is great. You're a very busy city. I've been here ten days. Besides all those meetings, I know that the Community Development Department has taken in four, five applications. I'm on my second review for a final permit with our associate planner. There's a lot going on, but I'm very happy to be here and, and happy to help out with the department.
We apologize in advance for your future experience in dealing with Metro.
We're since Seattle, so.
Well, it's a, it's a different thing.
It's very different than anything I've encountered in my planning career so far, yes.
Yeah. But great to have you onboard. Sorry to interrupt.
No, it's okay. Yeah, Metro, it's, it's, for those listening, it's the only regional government of this type in the entire nation, and it's, it's different for sure. Welcome aboard. I already got to meet you a little bit, but.
Yeah.
And we're really happy to hear, have you here and contribute to all the work that's getting done. There is, there, you're right, there's a lot of stuff going on. Hopefully, that's fun for you, because we got a lot of cool projects.
It is, and, and you do have a lot of really good stuff going on here.
Any other questions?
Welcome. We'll see you later.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for us, Craig?
I have one more item I'd like chief to talk about. It relates to a council goal, city goal of our reserve program, so I'll let him take over on that.
So this last Saturday, I got to present and actually swear in our two newest reserves, Grant Hardy and Tiffany Bachmann, and it sounds like they're already hitting the road. So, excuse me, it's, it's been encouraging to see their enthusiasm. The one thing I forget is their volunteers and the commitment they made with six months.
So, excuse me, it's, it's been encouraging to see their enthusiasm. The one thing I forget is their volunteers and the commitment they made with six months, three hundred and sixty hours was required for them to graduate. And so there is a lot of time away, just because they really feel invested in this community and what they're doing. Whether or not they go full-time, I don't know, but I'm very grateful that they're out here doing this. They're a great addition to the family, and so that gives us a total of four at the moment. We'd like about six, but we know the attrition rate of that just kind of ebbs and flows, but very happy to have them onboard, and you'll see them out and about with the other officers. And we're having an official official swearing in the twenty-sixth with them again, so they're going to get sworn in twice. I did it out there with the county, and there again, another great partnership. They took it on all of, for those three hundred and sixty hours, they had to provide all the training. We didn't, we weren't involved in it with our staff. So they dedicated a lot of time and resources for our two, two officers, so we're grateful for that. And that's it.
Very cool.
Does that make all four of us have been through that training now?
Great advantage for going to the academy. Unfortunately, because they have to go back down, if they get hired full-time, they got to go back down and do it all again, plus some at the academy, but they're leaps and bounds ahead of the other students that are stepping in without any experience, so it's, it's great.
Awesome. Great news. Anything else?
The last thing I have is, we have a city council meeting on July second, so we'll have one council meeting in July. That's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you, Craig. Any, so, any other questions for Craig? No. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to council announcements, and Taylor, you get to go first.
Okay. So with the library, we don't have a meeting this month, but the, they do have a Central South American dance called Danza Azteca Ottley, Oatley? I don't know how to say that, but it's on June twenty-fifth, so it's next Tuesday here at Canary Square, eleven o'clock in the morning. And then later that night, Ugandan traditional dance over at the Sherwood Center for the Arts at six-thirty. So two fantastic groups of, of a kind of dance and storytelling and music that we, we, you know, don't experience as much in this, in this area. And so, and, and so I encourage you to go to that and support it. And then also, the Sherwood School District, they had their budget meeting the same night we had our budget meeting. So I was, I was torn between which one to go to, and I decided to go to the city one, but they're, they're doing their, I just want to pass along congratulations to all the graduates. The services went off, you know, without too many hitches. We went to the middle school one. It was fantastic, so congrats to all the graduates this year, and that's it for me.
Thank you, Taylor. Renee?
Senior Advisory Committee did not meet. Housing Advisory Committee will meet next Thursday. I want to echo your thanks to city staff, so Public Works, PD, the fire department that was there, and everybody else who came out and supported Cruzin Sherwood. The thirty-second year is now behind us.
Thanks, Renee. Keith?
WRWC met, gave us updates on the, the regional water project. They wanted to express everyone's, their appreciation for everyone's patience for the never-ending project. I kind of told them my patience is gone. I'm, I'm a massive advocate for it, but it's taken so damn long. It is, yeah, my patience is gone. But only another two years to go. The, but they continue to make progress. If anyone, if any elected on city council is interested in touring the new water treatment plant, one hundred and twenty-fourth, while it's being constructed, reach out to Craig, and he can make connections to join tours. Of that, I've not done it, but it's an open invitation to, to electeds and staff.
And who's, who's going to be the beneficiary of that water treatment plant?
Halesboro, Beaverton, and unincorporated Washington County neighborhoods.
Because we built ours how many years ago?
Over twenty years ago. Well, twenty years ago, we started the project. It took a while to get it all done, but, yeah, we have our own pipe, and I have a much better water rate than all of those folks will be having for, forever. Cultural arts met on Monday, had a nice meeting, great, great folks. Want to highlight that the art walk in Old Town is on Thursday this week, five to seven-ish. If you're available, check it out. It'll be lots of fun. That's all I got.
Awesome. Thank you.
So first off, I'd like to request in next year's budget that we get new microphones. Like, I'm, like, I'm so funny watching us all fumble, the buttons don't work. Can we get a microphone with the buttons that work, please?
And honestly, people at home say they can't hear us, so.
There you go. So that's my, my budget request for next year. The Parks Board, we had two openings, we have two openings. Sounds like we have a great pool of applicants, five, I believe, that we will be interviewing early in July. Hoping to bring forth the two, two selected, chosen ones, if you will, to our six, to our meeting on the sixteenth, to get those officially put on, on, on the commission and then onboard. Then maybe whoever we don't pick, we can pass on to planning commissioner, whoever else needs them, and hopefully we can get some moved over to somewhere else. And we always have openings on our various boards and commissions, so it's a great way to get involved. It's where most of us got our start. I'd also like to thank, I know it was a, it was a line item in the, in the consent agenda, but Lydia McAvoy, HR Director, and all the work she did on putting together and updating the, the HR handbook, the employee manual.
You're here.
Obviously with legal and as well as other staff as well, but I can't imagine the work, the, I, there's no way I would ever do that. So I, I have a lot of respect for you in, in doing that work, and, and it's probably a thankless job and, and well done, and I think you did it. You brought forth a great product to us that we were able to digest and, and, and agree with, so, thank you.
Thanks, Luke. Dan?
Yeah, the planning commission did not meet last week. They are meeting next week for a work session at six fifteen instead of the usual seven o'clock. We'll be discussing the annexation policies. That will then be forwarded to city council at a later date. Wanted to recognize Five-O-three Incorked. This is their tenth anniversary year, and Coin Six did a interview with the owner, a video interview that you can check out on their site. Just to kind of highlight what, what's been going on with Five-O-three as well as, just highlighting one of our local businesses here. That's, seems to be doing really well. So it's fun to see. And then I also wanted to thank staff for helping with Cruzin. It went off great, even with the weather, with what it was. People seemed to enjoy it. I live near downtown or Old Town Sherwood, and we had cars parked up and down our street and around the corner. And so when I see that, I always know that we've got quite a few people in, in Old Town, which is fun to see. That's all I got.
All right, thank you, Dan. Kim?
Yeah, I'll piggyback a little bit on what Dan just talked about with Coin News, and maybe you'll fill in as well, but they highlighted the city of Sherwood last week, all kinds of departments. They had Bruce Coleman actually on air with them in studio, talking about our economic development. Bruce did a bang-up job, as Bruce always does. They had, one of the reporters is a former Sherwood high school grad, just like twenty-five years old. She's my daughter's friend, and she's one of their main reporters. Ally was out here. She interviewed Mosaic Art Studio. I can't remember who else they highlighted. But then the night before Cruzin, they were down at the Langhurst parking lot interviewing a selection of folks, somebody from the Cruzin, the Cruisers, Chamber President, and just, they just really did a bang-up job all week highlighting the city of Sherwood. So if you, I think you can find segments on their website, on their Facebook page, if you want to go see the interviews, they were great. And the only thing I was going to talk about, which Craig already mentioned, was today, the press conference with EPA was here, what's took place in this room, and I was happy to fill in for the mayor on a really short notice. But our city engineer, Jason, did a great job, gave a presentation about the brown fields cleanup and what that EPA grant will do for us, and when that property gets cleaned up, the potential that it brings to the city as far as a new Public Works facility, protecting our wildlife refuge, a stormwater facility on that site, and then potentially, you know, leaving four acres in our Old Town area for redevelopment. And then we, we went down to the actual site, which I'd never actually been on that site. You should wear long pants and tennis shoes with socks, but I didn't, so there's lots of pokey bushes out of the ground. But we walked way out to it, and it was really interesting, because you walk out and then it drops in this one area, and we had some folks actually go down into that area, one of them being former counselor Jennifer Castler, who works for our consultant that helped write the grant application. And on that ledge, when you look up, you just see the layers of the hot, the old hides, the cow hides and whatnot that are in the ground, that that's partially why we need it cleaned, cleaned up, because it was the tannery, and then it was a battery, acid battery location too, so lots of contamination, so.
Heavy metals, all kinds of bad stuff.
Yeah, yeah, so that, that was, I really enjoyed today, getting to do that visit out there. There were some folks from EPA, local, from out of the Seattle branch. Lots of their staff were here, so thank you for that opportunity.
I appreciate you filling in for me. Thank you. Yeah, I had a conflict at an Oregon broadband advisory council meeting at that time. I would have liked to have been there, but Kim, you did a great job, so thank you for doing that. I just have a couple of things. Kim, just a great job of outlining the EPA grant. We got four million dollars. We've been working on that, or five million, sorry. Five million dollars, we've been working on that for years, and finally got that over the finish line, which is great. It's going to open up a lot of opportunities for us. I had, had an impact meeting, Metropole, I'm sorry, Metro Policy Advisory Council, and we had staff, Eric and Joy were there presenting on our Sherwood West expansion. Got a lot of interesting questions. We also had the Urban Growth Report Roundtable meeting, and that was a really good meeting, a lot of interesting subjects, and again, we had Eric there presenting on the Sherwood West expansion. Did a great job in that meeting as well. They also presented to a work session of the Metro Council, so all of the, so they're, they're analyzing our ask, and so there's a lot of meetings and, and presentations going on, both public and behind the scenes as we work through that process. I had a WCCC meeting this week, and the Star Attraction in that, the Washington County Coordinating Committee, Star Attraction in that meeting was a presentation from Eric on the Sherwood West expansion. So I've seen it a few times.
It's a theme, yeah.
The great thing about it is Eric and, and the mayor can probably give the presentation with their.
Eyes closed.
Eyes closed, hands tied behind their back.
I think there's some truth to that, but I'm, I want to be.
That's great.
Clear. I spent thirty seconds introducing them, and Eric does, and Joy, and they do an amazing job in those presentations. So anyway, so that process is moving along. Another thing that came out of the WCCC I want to mention is, we applied for some opportunity funds that come out of the Mistip program for matching dollars for a project we want to do on Sunset Boulevard to improve the safety of the intersection at Sunset and Trimble. The, the TAC and the WCCC approved that allocation, so that's now going to the, the commissioners. And usually, if we sign off on it in WCCC, they're going to sign off and it's commissioners. That's great news. That'll help our chances, using those matching funds, of getting a safer route to school grant to improve that intersection, so we're very excited about that. For anyone who drives on Sunset during school hours, especially right now, that people have figured out they don't have to drive on ninety-nine, they can cut through our neighborhoods, we, we need to do some improvement there to improve the safety with all the kids coming down the hill there to and from school. So that was great that we were able to get that done, and big thank you to staff. You guys worked hard with the county staff to get that application in, and, and, is that Jason? Thank you, Jason. And pulling that off and, and getting that almost over the hurdle. We just have that last formal step with the commissioners, so that's all I have tonight. Anything else? Any other items? Good for the order? All right, we're going to go ahead and adjourn the city council meeting.
Love this town. Love our town.
Love our town. And we are going to jump right into our URA board meeting.
Ready to go, and I'm.
Five minutes.
All right. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and call to order our URA board meeting at eight twenty-five, Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Sylvia, roll call.
Chair Rosner?
Here.
Vice Chair Young?
Yes.
Member Brous?
Here.
Member Mays?
Here.
Member Scott?
Here.
Member Giles?
Here.
Member Stankey?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sylvia. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. We have one item tonight. It's item A, approval of the April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, URA board meeting minutes. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No, motion passes. Thank you, council. We have one public hearing tonight. Sylvia, do you need to read us in on the URA one-two? Thank you. That's okay. No worries. I was moving quickly.
The Sherwood City Council Urban Renewal Agency Board of Directors will hold a public hearing this evening to receive testimony on URA resolution two zero two four dash zero zero three, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-four twenty-five budget of the city of Sherwood, two thousand twenty-one Urban Renewal Agency, making appropriations, imposing and categorizing taxes, and authorizing the agency manager to take such action necessary to carry out the adopted budget. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff will present a staff report, questions by the board of staff. We will then receive written testimony. We will then open the public hearing for testimony, and the time will be limited to four minutes per person. Any interested person may present testimony. We will then close the public hearing and know their comments will be heard from the public. Final comments by staff, questions of staff, if any, by the council, by the board, followed by board discussion. If you wish to speak, please fill out a request to speak form and submit it to the agency recorder prior to the time the public hearing is opened for testimony. The board chair will recognize people who wish to speak, and any comments must be addressed through the board chair. When you come forward, please state your name and place of residence for the record as this hearing will be recorded.
All right, thank you, Sylvia. David, once again, take it away.
The, the final act tonight. Just a little bit of background. On May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, the URA Budget Committee convened, received the budget message. There was no public comment, but then that same evening on the twenty-third approved the proposed budget. So what I'm bringing forth in front of you, this is kind of the final step for the URA board to hold a public hearing and adopt the twenty-four twenty-five budget. All financial impacts have been analyzed by the, the Budget Committee. There's no recommended changes from the, from the Budget Committee, and so I respectfully recommend approving this resolution and the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five budget for the URA.
All right, thank you, David. Any questions for David? Nope, do we have, so no rep, written testimony?
Nope.
Do we have any public comment? Nothing online? I, I just, yeah, in my mind, I opened to public testimony, so it doesn't sound like I just saw, was Brad? Just double check. All right. Great. Well, seeing that there's no public comment, I will close the public comments, and we'll once again ask if there's any questions for staff. And I'll, I'll take a, I'll consider a motion.
I make a motion that we approve URA resolution two zero two four dash zero zero three, adopting the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four twenty-five budget of the city of Sherwood, two thousand twenty-one Urban Renewal Agency, making appropriations, imposing and categorizing taxes, and authorizing the agency manager to take such action necessary to carry out the adopted budget.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Discussion on the motion. Great budget. All right. Yes, great budget. All right. So no discussion, we'll move forward. So all those in favor of approving URA resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero zero three, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five budget of the city of Sherwood, two thousand twenty-one Urban Renewal Agency, making appropriations, imposing and categorizing taxes, and authorizing the agency manager to take such actions necessary to carry out the adopted budget, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say aye. All right, motion passes. Thank you, council. All right, motion passes, thank you, council, and with that, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Awesome.
Oh, thank you.
Beginning of this thing?
Do I need to get my shirt?
I remember, I think so.
Okay.